I do a lot of gifts for people. We took like a test one down.
And we didn't want to take down. We had a guy, he put his wife in graphics and she did the headrest. Over went to make it.
Okay, thank you. We will go ahead and call our first official regular meeting to order for 2025. And welcome, everybody. We're glad to have you join us in person. We're glad to have you join us online. Welcome to Craig Meadows as our interim city manager for your first official meeting.
Thank you, sir.
We are glad to have you here. And we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. We'll ask Gary Harris if he'll come up and lead us.
Present arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. At this time, we ask you join us in a moment of silent reflection for silent prayer to prepare for the meeting or however you choose to reflect as we start our session this evening. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll open the floor for citizen comments on public matters. If you have something you'd like to share or a question, come on down to the podium. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And please use the microphone and state your name for the record. The floor is now open. Seeing no one rushing for the podium, we will go on and close citizen comments this evening. Council members, we do have a resolution looking at working to become a certified crime prevention community. This is something that the Department of Criminal Justice Services works on and the Radford City Police Department is interested in. Sergeant Emily Height has a presentation for us, so we're going to ask her to come down and share with us some of the good things she and Chief Holdaway have been working on and what this would do for our community.
All right, so we're excited about this program. I think it'll do great things for our community and city as a whole. This is a year-long process, so I was going to kind of take you throughout the whole process that we're going to have to go through in order to get certified. And then we can go over the resolution. All right, so the process, like I said, it takes a year. So the first thing that we have to do with this is have a statement of intent of what we want to do for our community and how we're going to successfully complete this within a year. So we have to have the resolution that y'all will see tonight. And then we go into the development phase, which is we have 12 core requirements that we have to make sure that we reach and then show proof that we're reaching them. And we definitely pretty much are reaching all of them right now, so that's really good. And then we will see how the assessment goes. We have to be able to give them to DCJS. They give us some feedback on it. And then once it is all completed with the package review, then it goes throughout another phase, which is where the DCJS board will vote on it. And then they will let us know if we become a crime prevention community, which we have good intentions for. I think we can definitely do this and be successful at it. So here are the core elements to kind of give you an idea of what it's about. We have to develop a local community crime prevention coalition. And there's just going to be core members of the community in different aspects, talking about businesses, community members. We'll have schools with truancy involved. We're going to focus at the youth aspect of it. We have a certified crime prevention specialist that'll be myself that'll oversee the program. I've already started the Neighborhood Watch programs. You've probably maybe seen them throughout the community. We have really good ideas. We have two that are active right now with our crime, excuse me, our community engagement unit. So you might see the signs around there in Forest Park right now. They're a little smaller than we wanted, so we thought about it and we decided that we were going to kind of make it more in tune with our community. So we have more buy-in on it. So we were going to think that we might add a little like wrapper to it and make it our own. And then these will be bigger and act as a deterrent to let us know that if you come into our community that we have eyes that are going to be watching what you're doing. Next thing is community policing or crime control planning processes. So this is going to be the processes we're going to be going through and then what we're doing, all the programs that the community engagement units are already acting on and based on our trends that are happening here in our community. We're going to have some distribution of some safety items that we're going to give to citizens, whether it's a newsletter or just different, you know, information about scams that are going on in our community that is just kind of localized just to us. We're going to have, we already do like security and safety assessments for businesses, at the schools, homes. We'll continue to do that in our unit as well. And then obviously our patrol units, they all do the same thing. They're able to have that intel to be able to answer the questions of our community members of the crime analysis. We're doing that just now with Kalia and Velepsy with our accreditation to meet those standards. So that's already being done. The school safety audit, we're doing that with our SROs. They play a huge role in that business outreach. We also work with Chamber right now. And then we're going to do a business watch, so we're in the process of doing that and doing newsletters and just collaborating with them. Big can witness, we're doing that within the courts, delinquency programs, targeting that at risk use. We're going to partner with the schools even more just to make sure that we know what's happening in our community and we can focus on that, on that youth aspect. Obviously, the law enforcement agency must be accredited. We're doing that, we're Kalia and Velepsy right now. So we have to meet all of those. And then they have a list of about 25 elements or standards, as you say. And I just jotted down, we needed a minimum of seven. These are eight that just by looking at them, we already have, we're doing them on the daily. For members of TRIAT, we're active with that. The DARE program, National Night Out, Crime Solvers, Crime Stoppers, for gun safety programs, SROs, and then the agreements that we have with other jurisdictions with sharing information. Our domestic bombs response program. So as a whole, we're doing it. We just want to put it on paper to have that transparency that really helps. Help our community out, let people know that come to Rafford, it's safe and we're here.
And I guess the one thing I would add is that, you know, the thing that Emily does with her community engagement unit makes this so achievable for us that it's awesome that we're already meeting the majority of these standards before we even apply to be a part of this process. You know, I said earlier, I think roughly about 12 jurisdictions in the state right now are currently a crime prevention, our certified crime prevention community. I have 340 jurisdictions and there's about five or six in self-assessment. So we're definitely looking real promising and I can't wait to see where this holds. But at the same time, you know, crime prevention extends way beyond just a police officer pulling cars over. It's about community involvement and having interaction and making sure we're being held accountable and transparent with the people that we serve. And there's no better program out there right now than what we have with the Certified Crime Prevention Community. And we have benefits that extend farther than just the crime prevention aspect itself. You know, it helps us when we apply for grants and so forth, that it definitely makes us more marketable community in a police department when we look at it from a macro level.
Outstanding. Chief and Sergeant Height, I was wondering, you mentioned the Neighborhood Watch program. How are we rolling that out? I know there's a couple neighborhoods now, but if more people want to be a part of it, what do they need to do? Do they need to just reach out to you or is there a process?
Yes, Officer Nestor, he is the head. He's in charge of that right now. So they just reach out to the community engagement unit or him and the process of it and being able just to help the communities develop that, their neighborhoods, excuse me, to develop that. And then we can get it rolling. We have all the stuff that's ready for them.
I followed the one in Forest Park, so we're kind of defining, what do we think of as Forest Park versus not? And how far out do we go? And who do we include in this and all that? Have you done more looking at the city of like, okay, this is sort of a natural neighborhood here that makes sense? Or is that something we're going to do as we have people show interest?
It's as we show interest, but if someone say on a, that's not a neighborhood defined neighborhood, we can set it up as a street. You know, it doesn't have to be in a defined neighborhood. If you have a group of individuals that want the best for their neighborhood and call and build upon it and hold, be able to define those. But it doesn't have to necessarily be that.
Outstanding. One other question that I had, and it's not on some of the things you presented, but working with the regional commission, I know one of our priorities for opioid abatement money has been the recovery ecosystem. Does that play into this much with what we're trying to do to reduce drug use and recidivism and all that?
Definitely towards the youth. And that's with our DARE program. And we have a separate curriculum for DARE that is just on opioids to help that. And then the gun safety program is just for our youth. So there are different aspects of it that we are able to concentrate on. And what's so good about this program is that it's not set. It's flexible. So whatever trends are happening in our communities, we just readjust and we can make sure.
Outstanding. Thank you so much. Other questions?
How many Neighborhood Watch do we have? How many different neighborhoods do you know?
Too active as of right now.
Too active? Do you like to have, what, three homes in the street to get started or just one person?
We would need probably more than one person. We would need a couple people in order to actually make it effective. But one person is better than none. So if we take one, we'll build upon it.
Great.
I just want to say, I like the proactive approach and I appreciate all you guys do. I know we all say it all the time, but I think that this is awesome too, to kind of get out ahead of that too and not always just be responding to something, but also opening up, you know, additional avenues for people to reach and be with the police department. So I appreciate all you guys do and thanks for giving this. I think it's great, so.
A quick question. When someone is engaging in the Neighborhood Watch program and let's say that there is someone that has an interest, how do they cooperate with your department? What does that entail? Is there special training? Are there meetings in that particular neighborhood?
Yes, they have meetings and then they kind of, we help guide them to what they want. So every neighborhood can do something different. And it's kind of expanded more than just like having those in-person meetings. A lot of neighborhoods have the virtual where the, it's basically on Facebook, but a page where everybody can just chit chat about what's going on. So I mean, it can look differently in every neighborhood. There's not a defined way. But we tell them like some of the core things that they really need to focus on and that we'll be able to build what they want. So we're just kind of that liaison to them to be able to get them started and keep them going.
Well, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And so thank you so much for this presentation. Thank you for all the hard work you're doing. We do appreciate that. Council members, we do have a resolution. I'm going to read this for us this evening. You can let me know if this is something we want to move forward with. "A resolution of participation: Certified Crime Prevention Community Program. Whereas the governing body of the city of Radford is interested in the safety and security of its citizenry and the community at large. And whereas the governing body is prepared to support appropriate efforts within the community to become totally prepared to promote crime prevention and community safety. And whereas the Department of Criminal Justice Services offers a program which is specifically designed to recognize Virginia communities committed to crime prevention and community safety while providing a framework for those communities to institutionalize crime prevention at the local level. And whereas this program is entitled 'The Certified Crime Prevention Community Program', now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Radford that our community wishes to participate in the Certified Crime Prevention Community Program and that the leadership of this community fully supports all reasonable efforts to meet the DCJS requirements to become designated as a Certified Crime Prevention Community and be it further resolved that the program requires the existence or formation of a local community crime prevention community safety council or coalition. And this governing body designates the Radford City Police Department Community Engagement Unit as representing our community for the purpose of participating in this program. This resolution is in full effect upon its adoption this 13th day of January 2025." I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution. Do we have a second? A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all again so much and we do appreciate all the effort. As Seth said, trying to get ahead of this makes all the difference in the world. So we appreciate that. Council members, we don't have any old business to consider tonight, but under new business, it's new business, but it's something we've been talking about for about seven years. One of the issues we've had on East Main Street is that lighting has not been as robust as we would like it to be in the evening and nighttime hours. And when we were looking at some of the redesign of that business district, this was something that was brought forward as an issue. So there's a lot that has been decided for this program over the last five or six years. Some improvements include upgrades to utilities, sidewalks and roadway, outdoor dining areas, aesthetic enhancements, pedestrian and vehicular improvements, all the way from Harrison Street to Tyler Avenue. So basically, East Main Street, what we would consider downtown. This is for the lighting. So street lighting has been bid for 22 poles. Six are the taller poles that is right now on display downtown. And the other 14 are shorter and will work in the remainder of the district. They received, the city received two bids from State Electric, meeting all required design elements. It's $125,500 and the funds come from the Community Development Block Grant Program with no local match. And it takes about six months for the lights to be constructed and delivered. Melissa, do you have anything you want to add or anything you want to share regarding this? Or have we kind of covered it all pretty much?
We've covered it.
When does the money actually leave our coffers? When they're delivered or when they're ordered?
When they're delivered.
Okay. So this is not an issue for the next six months. And we talked about this previously, that CDBG money typically, I don't want to jinx it, but typically is back within 30, 60 days. So it's not a long period of time. We have to carry that. Yeah. Fantastic. Outstanding. Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
I want to be sure it's approved and you can ask for the funds, what, prior to?
Prior to delivery.
Prior to delivery.
As long as I have a purchase order in place and the lights are actually ordered, I can question.
That's helpful.
And the payment's not due again until we receive them?
Correct.
Yeah, I think that was only my question too, as far as for both of the orders of businesses, really working to make sure for cash flow issues that we're not, you know, sending a big amount out and then, you know.
Having to have a long wait to get it back.
Right, right. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion to award the contract to State Electric for the procurement of the street lighting downtown?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Again, also working with our Main Street project, this is another element of it, working to try to improve the crosswalks to make them ADA compliant. One of the big issues with a lot of our older sidewalks is they're not easy access for people in mobility assist devices, wheelchairs and other situations that make it hard for them to get on and off the sidewalk. So this will take eight ADA comply, or eight crosswalks and make them ADA compliant through downtown. So this will be at the four corners of the project at Tyler Avenue as well as additional four corners, which go down a little further from this project to the University Drive intersection. That's the bridge that goes across to the Dedman Center. The city received three bids for the project, which Jones Road and Bridge Incorporated had the lowest bid at a cost of $322,500. The funds will be provided by the State of Good Repair Program with VDOT and no local match once again. Work will begin in the spring. This is a little different because you don't really order a whole lot. There's some little textured areas, but for the most part, it's concrete. And the contractor has been notified of our intent to award. Anything else to add to that one?
Is this a same, what kind of deal is it on when money's transferred?
But can you get reimbursed once it's ordered or do you have to wait until it's received? Okay, not materials.
Correct.
Okay.
So how's, who knows just how our cash flows? We're not doing it till spring, right?
I mean, Craig, do you think this will be an issue with cash flow?
It should not be. That being said, we're still in the very early stages of understanding. I have asked Jay, our engineer, to reach out to VDOT because there was some question about how that reimbursement process would work. I know in a similar project that VDOT paid the invoices directly and there was no outlay. So we're still trying to get some answers to that and I'll be glad to share that once we have it back from the, from VDOT. But no, as Melissa mentioned, when work's done, if we receive an invoice, we immediately forward that to VDOT. And hopefully, in short order, once a check's written by the city, the money will also be coming back from VDOT. But we'll get that confirmed.
When you said paid directly, do you mean that they would send the check to Jones Road and Bridge? Oh, well, that's nice.
That would be not, that would be ideal if that's how the program.
That's what happened with the paving project. And it surprised us because we thought all this money was going to come in, we were going to have negotiated, and then the paver showed up and said, oh, okay. And they were being paid directly, so that's not a problem.
I appreciate that. That came up as a question concern today and so we have sent an inquiry to VDOT to find out exactly how it'll work, so.
Okay, how good, how long is the quote good for? Do we know? I mean, if we don't act tonight, waiting on an answer to the question?
I would assume quotes are generally good for 30 days, but I did not ask that question, so I don't know.
And so also judging by, I know we've been working on this for long before, since I was here, is there an expiration date on these funds that are the grant funds? Does, I mean, do we have to use them by a certain time? Okay.
So I asked the previous city manager about this when we were doing the paving project because originally we had thought the Main Street area was going to be paved as well or the downtown area. And you have to expend what has been designated before you can reapply for more State of Good Repair funds. So if we hold off on these, it might not go away, but it might preclude us from being able to go get additional funds to do the remainder of Main Street, which would go basically from Tyler Avenue, pretty close to the bridge. And that was another component of this project long-term. So that pushes that further out potentially or even reduces the amount that we might get.
When you talk amounts, if, so if we were to this phase of the project, but say for the State of Good Repair, there was, we wanted it to use for something else, at that time, how would you be able to do that? If we've already approved, say, a project to go out further, but then, you know, a new need were to arise, how does that work?
Project specific.
And I know when we were looking at the downtown project, of course, initially it was a much larger endeavor, but due to costs increasing and just overall cash flow, we've had to break that down into, really, you're going to see more phasing done. And a part of that is we not only wanted to break it down in phasing, but also into grant funding. So we want all the things. We know that we're going to do it slower and we're looking at that grant, yes, support. So it's not just out of our pockets directly. And it's also a commitment that we've had to our businesses that are on Main Street that have, I think, really struggled and it's going to take a little bit of investment. The mayor and I talked about this a few months ago when we did the Triangle Park. It was money that we put out and, you know, there was some conflict about it because it wasn't generating immediate revenue as a park. But what it did do is it brought increased enthusiasm to that area. And this is a part of the goal of making our downtown a real walkable destination downtown and having it paid for through grants.
And I understand that and I'm all for that, but in our current situation, you know, 322,000, it just bothers me. Could one more meeting give us time to get a clearer picture on how the funds would flow? How quickly?
I would hope we would have an answer to the inquiry to VDOT within a day or so. When this is, when this question came up today, we sent an email this afternoon and so I, as I've denied, I haven't seen any response.
Do you think one, putting it off one more meeting?
Well, I guess it depends on how long the quote would be active because I'm assuming this quote was probably received prior to the holidays. So I don't know if that clock is ticking on the time for the quote. That would be the only issue I would have is two more weeks too long.
And I honestly can't, I'm sorry, I can't answer that tonight because I didn't anticipate that question. Sorry.
I'm, I am comfortable voting on it just because I know how long it took to acquire this grant. And if we buy two weeks, it may actually buy us quite a bit longer. And these funds are reimbursable. So even though there's an outlay cost to us, it is going to be paid back to us. So I would say, you know, to get a project done, even of this magnitude, for free, is still a really good deal. I don't think we're going to find a better deal. It's just a matter of, you know, making sure that we're quick to do whatever is necessary on our end to get the funds reimbursed quickly.
I also think this is a better reimbursement timeframe than some of the other things that were done prior to even Seth and I being on council, where we had done projects and it took, you know, six months to get the money in. This sounds like a much more guaranteed thing. I do want to just say that while, while I think I'm on board as well, given the information that we know right now, I want to make sure that we are very clear and transparent about, you know, when we get the money in, when it's covered, because there are a lot of things that people are going to be seeing. Oh, we're getting new sidewalks and streetlights, but we need nets for the spring, you know, we need repairs for a lot of things for our students and our community to do from, from the damages that we had from Atlanta. So I just really want to be very mindful of, those are at the forefront and this is something that we're, we're getting money back for, so.
I think that's a great point, that make sure that, you know, one, that it is known that it is, you know, a grant, that there is no dollar-for-dollar match on this. And I do think too, you know, as people drive by Bissett Park and they still see caution tape and this or this and that around, there are a lot of areas that are devastated. But this money cannot be rerouted for that.
Correct.
All right. Because, you know, I would agree that if it could, that would probably change my opinion. change my my opinion, because those things, you know, obviously were still devastated from the hurricane, but yeah, Kelly, I couldn't agree more, I think that that's a, that's a good point, make sure that we know that.
Yeah, if we can't use it for anything else, then I don't want to lose it, and I don't want to, the cost to go up more.
But and I also I just do think it's very important too that we make sure that we are not going to pay off this in lieu of something else. If we get to a situation where, you know, that is an issue, we'll, you'll communicate that with us and, because that is, that's an important part of it too. And and hopefully we're not there, but just being, I'd rather be safe than sorry and cross that bridge and and, yeah. That sounds good, thank you.
Okay, so council members, there is a need to award a contract. Do we have a motion to award the contract to Jones Road and Bridge for the construction of the crosswalks along East Main Street? Do we have a second? A motion and a second, any further discussion? Jenny, would you call the role?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Okay, thank you all very much. Moving forward, we we do want to continue to communicate this along with our other financial information. And so maybe as we get those answers, we can have a more complete message that can go out that the contract was awarded. Here's the response that we've received from VDOT as to when we likely can receive the funds and how things will work and all of that, so that could be helpful, and that answers some of the questions that have been brought up. We do have some appointments to make. Being the first of the year, some folks' terms ended at the end of 2024, and we need to look at a couple of things. The first is the New River Valley Housing Trust, and you all have some information about the trust and how this works with the Regional Commission. There is overlapping work with the Home Consortium that benefits the community by having a home representative. And Melissa Skelton has served on the board and serves as Home Consortium Representative. So from my perspective, she's doing a great job with this, this is something that is fairly new. The consortium is fairly new for Radford and the New River Valley, but it's something that will bring more housing units into the city of Radford over the next five or six years. So with that, do we have a a nomination for the New River Valley Housing Trusts?
Melissa.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
A nomination and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations and thank you, Melissa, I know. I know, you've been working really hard on it, it makes all kinds of sense, and we appreciate your work on that. Charlie Cosmato, who is a former member of council and had been serving on the Planning Commission, has vacated his seat and there are two years left on this term. We do need a representative to fill the seat vacated by Charlie. Do we have some nominations for that role?
Me and Melissa, I I, so I sit on the Planning Commission as the the council rep, and we had talked about putting out some feelers.
Okay.
So I don't think that we have anybody yet unless someone else does, but we are working on that. So hopefully by next meeting, we can bring that back up.
Okay. That sounds good.
All right, sounds good.
Okay. Now, the next two are ones that I I served, I served on the Passenger Rail Authority along with David Ridpath in his role as city manager and then his service on the City University Joint Commission. I would like to be reappointed to the Passenger Rail Authority, but we need to fill the manager's position. And while Mr. Meadows is the perfect person for that and certainly part of it, I would like to put it to where we use the manager's designee. So it may be him, or it may be someone that he asked to serve in that role, I think that makes sense for both of those. So I'll ask, is the nomination of myself and the manager's designee acceptable for the Passenger Rail Authority?
Yes, it is for me.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then for the City University Joint Commission, the manager's designee to be appointed for that position, do we have a motion? A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay.
So I I do want to say one more thing about joint commission. I'm not sure if we we can officially vote on this, if we if we feel moved to, I guess, but Angela, the economic director at RU, and I were discussing how the joint commission has definitely moved leaps and bounds from when I started two years ago. And we've added some more people from RU, and I think that it's been really beneficial to have more people that are heads of their department at the table, and so I reached out to Jenny to see if she would want to join our team. It makes a lot of sense, she has a lot of knowledge that we may have lost with the prior city manager as far as things that happened throughout a yearly basis, it makes sense that she is our link to communication for public and within, so I would really like her to join and be a part of that.
So that would be an additional position?
Yes, it would not be a, it would not be filling the.
Manager's position.
Manager's designee.
Would it be filling any position that may become open in the near future?
Do you all have to make a change to your bylaws to be able to do that, or is that something we can just go and appoint?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. It is, I just didn't want to, you know, if it says eight, I didn't want to add ten and then have somebody say it's invalid or something.
There's no number, and RU far outweighs the number of people that we have represented. Not because they're trying to be bullies or, you know, but they have a lot more departments and a lot more people making decisions at their end, because they're just larger, so it just makes more sense, but I really would like her to be. I think it would also promote a lot of transparency, it would cut down on miscommunication, so I think all around it's a very good idea, in my opinion.
So a motion to appoint Jenny Webb to the Joint Commission, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Congratulations! Okay, moving on, we have one more piece of new business this evening to talk about our fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six budget for the Radford Transit Operating System. The city makes an annual application to the Federal Transit Administration for funding to support Radford Transit. It requires the public have an opportunity to provide comments on the application and proposed use not to exceed two point six million dollars of the planned operating funding and one point one five, or one point one-one for capital investment in the fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six budget. A public hearing needs to be scheduled for that, and so if we have a motion, we can schedule it for January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, that's our next meeting. Do we have a motion to do so?
Mister, hang on, one second, sorry, I think Melissa might have an update.
Yeah, we have an update to that, so.
Come on down, Melissa!
Now, before you get a motion out there, you might want to hear what Melissa has to share.
That sounds good, Melissa, what do you have for us?
Part of my memo that I sent to you all, I informed you I was working with GRPT to try to find some additional funds to leverage. This all is really because of our TRIPS grant, which is, we are in the third year of our TRIPS grant, which is the, to support our regional transit. GRPT has come back, they came back and and said that they are able to provide us some additional funding this current fiscal year to where we're only spending, the match is fifty percent versus our seventy percent match that we have right now, so we'll have some cost savings for FY twenty-five, while the same thing they're proposing, they're proposing to take away basically the third year of the TRIP grant because of that seventy percent local match. So this current, the application for FY twenty-six would include the whole fiscal year at the fifty percent match, when the budget I provided you only provided the spring portion, and on top of that, we had our TRIPS portion of the grant. So I am working on all of those numbers, was trying to get it done by today, just wasn't able to happen. The good news also, since we are a new fifty-three eleven recipient, we do not have to have a public hearing. I mean, but, you know, still all about transparency, once we have the budget all together, we'll put it on the website, and of course, approval from city council. But that gives me a few more days to put together what that would look like, and I'm going to provide options, because I know one of the concerns is cost. And I'll be providing you a ridership report and everything at our January twenty-seventh meeting, as well as that funding breakdown, so hopefully by the beginning of next week, I'll be at some training tomorrow through Thursday, so beginning of next week, hopefully have that out to you. But at the end of the day, we're looking at some savings over the next year and a half.
Outstanding, so what I hear you saying is things have changed a little bit, we don't need to schedule a public hearing for the twenty-seventh, but we will schedule a presentation where you're going to share all these things, give us some of the numbers, and help the public understand a little bit more.
Correct, and as as a fifty-three oh seven, what we were previously being a direct recipients to FTA, that was one of the requirements, but now that we are a sub-recipient to the state, we do not have to have that public hearing.
Okeydoke, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your hard work on this, a lot of folks don't realize how much goes into the transit piece, and it is invaluable to folks. I see people every single day taking the bus to different places in the community, it's how some people get to work, it's how some people get to shopping and other things that they need, so it really is wonderful, thank you. So for those who couldn't hear, the ridership is up above forty-three percent over last year, so that is good news.
I have a comment. Do we all agree with not having a public hearing? I hate to not give our citizens an opportunity to, I mean, I know they have their citizen comments at the beginning, but if they wanted to have a separate time to come and speak about just that, I know that that's a hot topic for a lot of people, given the budget, that's a big chunk of money that we have to, what is it, almost three hundred thousand, two hundred and?
It is three hundred thousand, basically.
You know, and a lot of people, you know, see it going around Christiansburg and Blacksburg, and they don't like that, and they, you know, think that that's something that we could cut and then start back up again when the cash flow's a little bit better, so I would hate to take that opportunity away from people to
I think we can have a public hearing, I don't know if we can call it that if that's not a requirement, does that mess up the grant?
You can.
You can.
Say you can, just says you don't have to.
So how about?
We would have numbers by the beginning of next week.
So there's an advertising requir-
Why don't we do this, why don't you get us the presentation for the next meeting, and we could schedule a public hearing at that meeting for February? Okay, then, well, what do we want to do?
Well, what would we do if we had to have the public hearing and this didn't change? I still don't understand why we can't schedule a public hearing.
Because with the, but with the advertising requirements, do you have to put information out there prior?
I guess.
That's correct.
Just a comments section.
Special comments section.
We can put the information on the city's website and schedule a public hearing for comments about the city's participation in Radford Transit.
I want to make sure everybody is really upset about the budget, and I want to make sure that we are giving everybody an opportunity to come and speak their piece and have all the knowledge, even if we don't have to, I think this is a really good opportunity to make sure that everybody knows we're working hard and letting everybody comment on what they feel is bothering them.
For cleanliness, since there are legal definitions around a public hearing, do we want to say that we will have a comments section following the transit presentation?
I like that.
An opportunity for public comment, yes.
Yeah, for a public comment.
Now, a quick question.
That keeps it from being an issue of saying it's a public hearing, but we're not following the public hearing protocol. That way it's a comments section, and and we can do that, I think that's fine, we will schedule a comments section and questions following the transit presentation on February or January twenty-seventh, okay?
Question on on that, I did ride the transit on the seventh, so I have some things to share with council on that, but I wanted to ask about, when you were talking about some regional funding, is that regional meaning to include Christiansburg and Fairlawn, or is it just the entire region of which we currently cover?
TRIPS is the regional from Radford to Christiansburg, so that's, that is the grant that we received to expand. Fairlawn is already included in our regular operating. Forty and forty-one originally was just during full service, afternoons and evenings. And of the forty and forty-one included Monday through Friday, Saturday, year-round, from six fifty in the morning existing route that we already have, to be year-round.
So. So the the increase in funding, is that really, when you're saying regional, is that, are we talking about that Christiansburg route? Okay, I'll be curious to see that too, because I know when I was riding out on transit, the route that we took was to Walmart, and it was a Tuesday at about three, three-thirty-ish, we missed one bus, so shame on us, but, yeah, talking. And I was very impressed, this was a time period when we did not have students in per se riding, and at any given moment, going to Walmart and seeing people kind of navigate the buses to get to that that hub to get to Walmart, I would say the buses that I saw probably had on average nine to fifteen people, and the bus that we were on, it it varied, but it was probably right around that, and that was a Tuesday in the middle of the afternoon without students, so I think it, the ridership was a little bit higher than I had anticipated, and I know from last year when I rode out, I could definitely just from that see a significant increase, so I would love if you guys have time and want to ride the transit, it really is eye-opening. One gentleman was talking in front of us and, you know, it's, to get to Walmart, even though we're providing public transportation, it's not an easy road. You know, this this gentleman had planned over an hour of his day to get you know, from one place to the hub to get to Walmart to shop, and then get to the next bus to get back to the hub to take another bus, and he was talking to his wife on the phone, talking about how he checking that grocery list, making sure he had everything, because it's, it's a, you know, it's a it's a commitment to go get groceries when you don't have transportation, and especially if you have other things and you're on a tight budget, so I would just encourage everyone, if you have time, to ride the transit, it really is illuminating, so thank you again for taking me out.
And and Melissa, I know we had kind of talked about it too, after the, after your presentation, would that be a good time to talk about? You know, I know we had looked at maybe condensing or concise in some of the Christiansburg routes, or how that all worked, is that, would that be the the time that we would talk about that, or when, when in your ideal? Right.
If we don't apply for this grant, then we are, we've got contracts, so we're, we are, we have two point five million dollars that we have to. So we don't, we won't get the one point.
And I and I know you will, but will all that be included in the presentation, because it's good background knowledge for people who who don't know too, because I know when I talked to you, you were you were catching me up on things, and I've I've been here for two years and it's still.
It's gone very fast, so I apologize, you know, the state is really trying to help, you know, for us as much as they can with this program.
Well, Melissa. Melissa had pulled a lot of information together at the end of last week for tonight, and then we got new information Friday afternoon, so she's been scrambling today trying to get it all nailed down, so.
And you don't have anything else to do besides this, Melissa, it's not like this is your.
Just say to Jesse's point, I stealth ride the transit pretty often, I'll I'll ride different routes just to see what it's like, and it is eye-opening because a lot of times you'll go past a bus to see an empty bus, and that's your perception of it. But when you've actually ridden on it and you see how people use it, when you notice the folks that are particularly on the Main Street stops that have bags and bags of things, whether it's laundry, because we no longer have a functioning laundromat here in the city, or or groceries, or work, or whatever it is, it is eye-opening to ride it and to experience what a service it is to so many folks in Radford, so.
For one day.
Sure.
I think the point being too is a lot of folks don't have another option. That is their only option. And with the student population increasing too, I think that's pretty important for them to have the ability to, to maneuver around and not feel like they're on an island. We want them to move around town and to utilize our community and businesses. So we sometimes in that instance, we have to provide them the ability to do so. So it's not just to stay off the roads. It's people that don't have any other option and also the students that we're hoping to continue to accommodate and grow to give them opportunities to move around to.
Well, and I'll, I'll add one last thing that we have a significant population of retirees that live in West Radford especially that utilize the bus very heavily. And that, that group has either chosen not to drive or unable to, to get around the city in another way. And just like the other day when we weren't able to provide transit service, that is a disruptor and it's certainly significant. But everybody does a really good job. And thank you, Melissa. Anything else?
One last thing. Yeah, I will say thank you, Melissa. And I, and I do think it provides an invaluable service for a lot of people. But I do think it is very worth our while to do our due diligence and make sure that we are lean and mean as we head into those things while it's, it's a great thing. And, and thank you, Melissa, for, for really diving into it for us.
Well, will you talk, Melissa, about the size of the buses? I mean, we've got, what, two that are, what capacity, 30 or more?
Actually, we've got four that are the larger new flyers and, and we are looking at reducing, actually some of the buses that are up for replacement that I provide you on the Capitol, those are actually new flyers that we're going to replace them with smaller buses. These are, these, these buses are 12 year, 500,000 mile buses. So we've had them since 2013. So we're not able to replace them or request funding from the state to replace them until that useful life is up. So always looking at, okay, is it, is it supporting the system we currently have? We all know the enrollment went down after COVID and it's really impacted our system. So, okay, we're going to scale back, get the smaller buses yet. They're less expensive, not as much to maintain, but also, you know, we need to have a couple in our fleet because we have larger events that we need to be able to move people down and also for emergency purposes, if they have to evacuate or anything like that. So we, it's always good to keep a couple, but we are looking at replacing those with a smaller vehicle.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Well, Mr. Meadows, this is your first opportunity to have some manager comments during a meeting. The floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And it has been a busy first two weeks. I remember one of the comments I made when I retired from Montgomery County was one thing I wouldn't miss was getting up early in the morning and trying to find out what the roads were like. And so my third day in, which was Saturday, I was texting with Jerry, texting with Timmy, you know, it was, so we've, we've certainly had a couple of challenges with winter weather. I want to commend our city crews for getting out there and getting a lot of things cleaned up quickly. We had to reschedule trash collection due to some of the impacts, but our guys have been out there working hard. And unfortunately, it depends. If you love cold weather, I think you're in store for some more coming up in the next week or two. But I, I don't think that was the last blast of winter that we're going to be dealing with this year. But brought back memories and I got right back in the groove. Like I said, I was texting folks early on Saturday morning, making calls and trying to keep you guys well informed of what's going on. But I've really enjoyed getting to know the staff. One of the blessings of having a few days here before I officially started on January 2nd is I'd had a meeting with the department directors that David had invited me to. And so I had met quite a few and little did I know, the second and third day I was here, I'd be talking to most of them by text and phone. But everybody came together and did a great job. We're also working to continue to address the repairs from Hurricane Helene. A lot of work still to be done. I hope to have a report for you in the coming week or so about where we are with that and, you know, what we, what we're looking into and getting some things addressed. I know there's a lot of interest in Bisset Park and some of the activities that have been there in the past and what the city's planning to do to get some of that addressed. So we will get you the best information we can on that. Also know, you know, another hot topic is, and you've heard that tonight, is the city's finances and looking at our cash flow situation as I've shared with the council several times. You know, the revenues are strong. The expenditures are with budget. The challenge is matching those up in a cash flow so that it makes sense in terms of how the city functions. And still a lot of questions of that. I've had an opportunity to talk to the city finance director about from the city side, how those things look. I'm meeting with the treasurer tomorrow morning. Be my first opportunity to sit down with Janet and talk with her about from the constitutional side in the treasurer's office, how she handles the revenue side of things. And so I'm, I'm anxious to gather information. And as I've shared with you several times, there's not a, there's not a quick fix to this, but it's one that I want to gather information, come back to you with my findings as I find them. That being said, at, at the January 27th meeting, I don't know that I'll have a lot of detailed findings, but I certainly plan at the second meeting each month. And honestly, anytime I have information to share with the council and the public, we will be out there with information on where we are, where we're going. That's one of the priorities I see, if not the priority for me during my time as interim, is helping the city get that addressed and get you on the right footing moving forward. So, and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, sir. And just a note on that, I think for the first one, we're going to do second meeting, but for the remainder, we're going to do first meeting because we don't always have a second meeting.
That's correct.
But for those that, that are out there watching, we're going to have this as an agenda item that we're going to continue to revisit. We talk about it all the time, but it's going to be a formal item on our agenda so that it's clear when we're having that discussion and to hopefully be able to update people as much as possible with the information that we have.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Wilford, I forgot to say welcome to you for your first council meeting and welcome back after your, your break for just a few years from the time you served before. This is council member comment time. So we'll let you go first this evening and share what thoughts you have.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Main thing I wanted to say is to the citizens of Radford, I want to thank them for their trust and faith in me and to tell them that I'm going to do the very best job that I can for them while sitting on the, on the council. Otherwise, I'm looking forward to working with you and I'll try to learn fast and do what I can do to be cooperative in most cases.
Thank you very much. We're glad you're here. Seth, what do you have for us this evening?
Yeah, I'll just tie in about welcoming Craig. Craig, it's, it's, I know you've, you've hopped in with both feet first and, and are learning, but this is not your first rodeo. So you, you come with some experience and we're very thankful for, for that and for you taking the time to help this community and look forward to working with you in our short time together. It's been a pleasure and I know that it, it will be. So thank you for stepping up into this role and, and working with us. I also wanted to congratulate Guy on him winning his seat. And Kelly, we're so glad to have you back. Congratulations. So look forward to working with you all this, this year. I know some other things that we had kind of talked about, we talked about a little bit in our work session meeting of looking at some of the land inventory that the city, some of their holdings and what we could maybe do with that to hopefully spur some development. If it's just going to be sitting there, let's, let's see what we can do to get that moving. I know we had also talked several times about maybe getting Kim repass in to give us an update on where we're at with the Wells Fargo building. You know, we're about to have a Moes building move. So, you know, there, there's some things that we need to get moving and just, I think updates for us and the community would be good too. And hopefully we, you know, we, we have some nice infrastructure in place. So it'd be nice to see some good businesses come into those. Also wanted to mention, and there's another meeting before then, but the Radford Chamber Gala for 2024 is February 8th from 5 to 9 at the Radford Highlander Hotel. I hear there'll be some special awards this year, a silent auction. And it's always a good time. We always have a really good time. So I hope everybody can make it. I think it's a casino theme this year. Is it casino? Yeah. So it's, it's always, always a good time. So I encourage, encourage you guys to go to that. And then I think Craig already kind of summed up what I was going to say is, you know, there's no more pressing, pressing issue than the financial health and stability of the city. Whether I'm getting my haircut or if I'm at the grocery store, somebody calls me about tax, oh yeah, how's Radford? You know, what do you, you know, and people care. And then, and I think Craig said this numerous times, there is a pride in it. I think that our citizens will roll up their sleeves and, and get to work during the hard times too. And we'll, we'll get through it and we'll get there. And we did add an agenda item where we can have those updates. So I think that that'll be great. But I just wanted to say that there's, you know, it's on all of our minds. It's something we're going to hit this budget season hard and get to work. But I look forward to the new year and that's all I got.
Thank you, Seth. Thank you. Jesse, what do you have?
Just kind of piggyback on what Seth said, actually, other than welcome and glad to have you next to me. So I, I think from the work session, just some things that I just want to reiterate to, to make sure that we add to our itinerary. Cause I think the big thing that I walked away with from that work session is that there really was a lot of information gathering that we wanted to be more proactive on. So a couple of the things I want to make sure that we get in our itinerary, we don't let time slip past us. As we wanted to speak with Janet about every three months at least to have her come in and give us an update to make sure that all of our communication is on the same page. I'd like to get a schedule for the next year of a monthly tour of a local business. So every month we know when we're going out and we have that not month by month, but you know, plan ahead for that year. Budget meetings, we know there's going to be a lot of those. And I really see this as a bit of a dichotomy. We're looking at department budgets, make sure we're running efficiently and effectively, but also our tax rates. So there's really two different topics, but I want to make sure that we start planning those now. We need to jump in, get in the trenches, start talking now about this. I had city holdings, same thing there. Tourism board, I know that that's been a little bit of a start and stop mechanism, but I keep having citizens in the community ask me where we're going with that. So I'd love to see that board become active because we keep saying that tourism is a priority to the community and to council. So I think we need to have the action, kind of reinforce that. And the West End Commerce Park, again, same thing. I would love to get monthly updates on who we're talking to, how negotiations are going, just to give us an idea on if there are additional infrastructure that's needed, different planning, different grant writing that we need to be doing. So mainly my main message tonight is I just want to make sure that those things we've teased out, that we actively get on the agendas and, and we start hammering out. So that's all I have. Happy January.
Thank you very much. And Kelly, it's been said before, but welcome back. Congratulations. And you ready to start again for four more years? There you go.
Yes, I'm very thankful, very thankful. Thank you very much. Welcome, Guy. And we're, we're glad to have you and, and excited to work with you. And yeah, this was not a job that I, I knew it was going to be difficult, but I, the thing that I didn't anticipate was how much I would love it. It's, it's really hard, but I feel like it's a, you know, if it's, I, I, I'm very passionate about it, I guess. I didn't, that was something that I did not foresee. So I want to thank everyone who has had faith in me again after voting two years before and then, and then two years after. I hope to continue to not let you down and I will continue to work very hard and I hope to see this through for the next four years and over this, this small bump we have in the road. Thank you to Craig. You did an amazing job so far.
Thank you.
Communication off the charts. So that's, that's really one thing that was really important to, I think, all of us. So we really appreciate that. Melissa, you know, you have all the stuff on your plate. So thank you for, for doing all the reporting for the transit. I know it's a hot topic for people. So, but I have complete faith that you will come with all the information that we need next time. So thank you. Officer Height, thank you for your presentation. I'm just blown away by the amazing work and the outstanding platform that, that you guys have created for the community outreach and helping to get the certification and CLIA and all the things like hearing you guys say, you know, well, why wouldn't we try to do this? We already have most of this, we're already doing most of this stuff on our own. That, that speaks volumes. So thank you guys so much and thank you for all the men and women that serve in Radford. You really, really set the bar high for work ethic, that's for sure. And ditto to all the things for the work session. I was really, we played a little game where we, we answered questions about things we can improve, things where we did good, what are our 12 month, three year, five year goals, something like that. And we really were all kind of on the same page. And that was really nice to have a cohesive meeting where we all kind of had the same goals and ideas. So that was something that really made me feel good about moving forward. Yeah. And happy January. Stay warm. That's all.
Thank you very much. And I'll, I'll piggyback on that a little bit. Yeah, I thought it was great for us to get together and talk a little bit about some of the goals that we have. One of the pieces that I think is really important is for us to continue to talk about the positive things that are happening. We certainly know there's a lot of challenges in our community and there are things that we want to move forward and, and address in a different way. One thing I'll point out, and we, we get these updates and we'll probably talk about it a little bit more with an economic development update, but there's been record investment in Radford almost annually for the last eight years. That is sowing the seeds for the future of our community. Building permits are up, new housing is up, new improvements to existing housing and businesses. That is significant for our city and it doesn't happen everywhere. And so we're really appreciative that those folks are taking a chance on Radford and us working with the public portion of, of that entire enhancement for our community is really important. And we'll continue to share that good news. Thank you for bringing up the, the chamber function on February 8th. I had planned to talk about that a little bit. I hope you can support our Chamber of Commerce. Dan McKinney does a great job. The entire board does a great job. Jesse's our representative for that board. Really, really appreciative of the work they do to help promote Radford business and Radford opportunities. So February 8th, come on out and support the chamber. And then March 1st, it's a little early, but I actually have a question and then a comment. So the polar plunge will be down.
Are you going to invite everybody to join you?
At the park. Well, that's coming, absolutely. But will we be ready for that by March 1st? Cause we had significant damage down near Dudley's Landing. Are we looking okay for March 1st? Because I want to make sure that we've done whatever we need to do to make that work.
I should probably, I don't, I can't make my, or maybe it is working. I just don't see the light. We're good. Yes, I'm meeting with that committee next week. Craig and I, if we need to get together and talk about that, we do have the backup plan. We always have that backup plan in place of the two pools that will take place up, up on the field. I mean, when we had to do it a couple of years ago, two, two years ago, it worked really well. I know people don't think it's as great as jumping in the river.
It's colder.
It's colder. I think just making sure that boat ramp and that area is cleaned up is, is the biggest thing. And so, and I discussed with them when we did our preliminary meeting back in November, October, November, that, well, it was after Helene, but we talked about the damage and making sure.
Well, and it's bigger than just that. So one of the pieces I wanted to bring up is there are thousands of people that come out for this event and that's hundreds, if not thousands of cars as well. So access, parking, all of those pieces to make sure we're ready and okay. But I just wanted to put that bug out there. I know that's coming up March 1st. So council members, the Special Olympics is a significant part of our community and their biggest fundraiser of the year is the polar plunge. We've raised tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last few years for that. We would love to have you join us. I'll be joining my traditional team, the Chillbillies will be out there jumping in the water, trying to help everybody raise a little bit of money for Special Olympics. But we'd love to have you at least come out. If you can't jump in the water, I mean, I know it's a little crazy. It's actually not bad if it's in the river. The worst part, those pools were pretty tough. That's our backup and I get it. And that's not a bad thing to have, but it was chilly. I appreciate that. I swear there was ice floating. A penguin was looking at me when I jumped in that, that pool the last time. But, you know, speaking of, of winter weather and, and all, all jokes aside, the city did an amazing job with these last two storms, from public works with the streets to the electric department, to the water department, dealing with the significant water line break during the storms, to our police, fire, EMS, all addressing things that have taken place, communication, everything that needs to happen, all the pieces work together. And the city has, has benefited dramatically from that. So I want to say good job to everybody and thank you for your hard work on that. good job to everybody, and thank you for your hard work on that. It's not automatic. It is the hard efforts of a lot of folks. And Craig, your communication was excellent. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. You know, good things are in our future, and, and we've sown seeds. I think this is going to be a year of a lot of positive blossoming for the city of Radford and new things happening. The West Radford Commerce Park, some of these empty structures becoming filled, some new housing is scheduled to go up, some new improvements to East Main Street and other business areas. I think you'll see these little positive things all throughout the calendar year, and the finance piece will hopefully get itself in a better position with all of us working on it as we have been for years and continuing to work in that direction. One thing I will say, if there are questions out there, we all have email addresses. Please email us with your questions. We are more than happy to get those. If we don't have the answer, we will certainly find the answer for you and get that information out there. Having said that, I think we're good to go. If, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Time moved.
Everybody say good night. Good night.